All right, we're gonna start the tax and government financing study group meeting. And we're hoping today is the last face-to-face meeting. So let me just sort of set the stage and then we'll dive right in. I know at least one of us has to leave around 10:00. So we're scheduled for longer than that. Hopefully, we get through the whole thing ASAP. So in the email, I mentioned the introduction section. And so I got a draft from the volunteer we had. And it seemed like it was probably more appropriate to go in the document library than be a part of our report. And so Brian Kelsey and I consulted. And we split up the division of labor to draft an introduction section. And we're expecting to have that be available in the next day or so.
We'll be sending you guys an invoice later for that work.
Right. The only person who hasn't checked out on the table.
Right. You don't write checks anymore.
Yeah. It's partially written right now in a way that Brian and I think is neutral and effective and is properly an introduction to set the stage. So the hope is that we get through the recommendations today and then we're able to circulate the introduction section in the coming days, probably about six pages long, seven at the most, which honestly, we feel like capturing how TIF works, where we're at, where we're going. And six or seven pages of facts is pretty efficient.
I don't know whether this would fit in. Would it occur to me that it'd be helpful to have some kind of introductory paragraph that kind of summarizes the recommendations? And the council says, this is kind of the big picture. We think TIF is a useful tool. We think it can be improved in the areas of transparency, blah, 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 blah. And then get into the specific recommendations. Just kind of give people kind of a roadmap of this is where we're going.
Yeah, let's put a pin in that because I think that's a good idea. Let's get to that in a couple of minutes. Anyway, so the intro section that's been promised, still being promised, I feel it's two-thirds drafted. I feel good about where it's at. We'll get it to you guys. Before we get into the recommendations part of this thing, there's two first pages, the summary page. And let's just talk about that first. I mean, it's pretty easy to skim over that. I've tried to read it a couple of times like I mean it. I feel good about the summary page. And but I'm open to comments.
I'm okay with the summary. I don't mind status.
There were a couple of minor typos.
We can send this after today. I definitely gotta get the typos out of it.
I wasn't directing that at you.
All right. Next one is the observations and recommendations page. And we've decided on this format of we're gonna have observations and then recommendations. I think all the action is in the recommendations, but the observations matter too. This is another one where it strikes me as Liz did a good job of capturing where our heads were at, at that last meeting that she facilitated. And these strike me as okay.
So did we did the recommendations with Liz? Did we did the observations with Liz?
We must have because she drafted them. Yeah, I think she, as I remember it, we had submitted all the materials to her in advance and we'd given all the ideas. And she tried to distill them into themes that were the observations and then the action items were the recommendations.
I just got an email and it mentioned TIF and that's why I'm bringing it up. And the essence of the email was that there are 12,200 people who live downtown. And there are 31,000 hotel rooms, I don't know if that's accurate or not, that have about 80% occupancy. And so that comes out to about 24,000 and something. And the question was, we've spent, and they didn't have the amount, X number of dollars through TIF for downtown enhancement to benefit this small number of people. And what have we spent to benefit the whole? And we had talked one time about having that. We have some data on what was spent, how it was spent, and putting that together in a way that kind of, you know, is easily readable and comprehensible. But I think that's what people are really kind of concerned about. And I think that's where a lot of education can take place because there's probably by an order of magnitude of 50 or more, a perception of how much TIF is actually used. And that's probably an overstatement, but you get the...
I went back and looked at my notes from the public hearing. And that's one of the things I think we need to address. I think, Paul, you've said it very well, the misperceptions about a lot of these things. I mean, people don't understand money that the city invests that produces tax revenue as opposed to money that we invest that produces a school or an affordable housing unit or something else. I mean, it's just apples and oranges. And so, and Bert said it very well, too, that there was a perception at the public hearing that there was just a bucket of money and that rich developers were coming in and scooping off some of the bucket of money that could otherwise go for horrible housing for schools or for whatever, which we're really just talking past each other, you know, when we had that conversation. And I feel like we need to do something to address that concern. And I think, I think the people who came to that public hearing are gonna read this report and say, you people totally missed the point. You know, I mean, I want more money for affordable housing. You know, I mean, what does this have to do with me? You know? So I don't know how we address that.
It's definitely an observation.
It is.
That needs to be added.
Well, just because of who I am and what I do, I can't be on this committee and have spent six months on it and not come out with some kind of an understanding or statement that this is what it is, this is how it is because of constraints or whatever else. And this is what we need to do to make it better.
Right. And I think that just the, some look at the amount of property tax and sales tax increase that's generated in downtown for the entire, I mean, if you, for the entire community, if you took, you know, six blocks of downtown and pulled it out, that could be probably 10% of your property tax or some, I mean, some number. It is just, and to think, I think what you're saying, which is, hey, we just did it for these 20,000 people, is just, I mean...
I think it goes back to a theme that I don't know that we're gonna resolve here, but is downtown subsidizing other parts of the community or are other parts of the community subsidizing downtown? And I don't think we probably have agreement. Well, this committee about that, but I do think that we can't just say that it benefits just 24,000 people or whatever the number is because we do have a proprietary district that's creating both a large percentage of the property tax certainly by area as well as other areas.
So the way that I feel like we're, and maybe we need to be more direct about saying it, but I feel like the recommendations that we all agreed to last time address both sides of this conversation in that by sticking in the, working on an agreed-upon method to assess the impact of, you know, good and bad, we've got that recommendation in here. And coupled with, hey, MDHA and the council have to agree at the front end of redevelopment district about what the goals are and requiring that agreement again every 10 years to make sure the loans are still going between, in my mind, between saying we need an objective way to measure the impact, which gets at, is it a net ex, is downtown a net ex order of revenue or does it use revenue? You know, I don't think, we're not gonna answer that in the next week. But the way I think that we've got it teed up is to, we're saying, there isn't, there isn't a way to assess the impact right now. We need a way to assess the impact that people believe in and we're gonna periodically make the council and MDHA re-agree in order to keep new loans going. That's how I've got it in my head that we're addressing the two sides of that.
I think it's too subtle. I think people need something very direct that they can understand and to help whatever their, however, the misperception was articulated during the public meeting that I was out of town so I couldn't go. We need to say something in that kind of language or words, even if it amounts to that.
Yeah, but I hate, like, not to, I mean, I don't wanna debate what Richard said, but, you know, misperception is a loaded term. You know, you can just easily say failure to communicate by the government or whomever. And like, I don't, I don't know whose fault it is. I mean, I suspect if there's widespread misperception, then that's a failure to communicate. So...
Well, I agree with what you said, Bob. We're not gonna solve this problem, and I would also, Paul said, I think we've got to advance the conversation past where it is. Because I didn't feel like there was a lot of engagement at that public hearing. I think people came to say their piece, you know? I'm for affordable housing, I'm for education, I'm for whatever. And it didn't really tie anything back together. And I think, I think we've educated ourselves in this committee. I certainly understand a lot better the criticisms of TIF than I did six months ago and why people are concerned about it. But I don't know that a lot of that shows up in this report.
It's not in there now. I think it's gonna be important, council member, that in these observations, our grant due, it needs to be articulated. But I think we also need to make sure that there is some consistency between these observations and the recommendations. I'd hate for us to have an observation over here and not a recommendation to address it. Okay? And I'm not sure that I see that in all of these. Another issue that I was, I was strapping down some of the other things that we talked about in the meetings and including, you know, reporting out. I don't know if that's the transparency thing, but this whole notion of the collaboration between Metro Finance and MDHA so that we can have some reasonable assumptions around how to project those, that's kind of missing in here also as an observation, those surprises.
I think that helps address the issue.
Yeah, and then, okay, so you've got an observation, yes. But then you also need a recommendation on what's the next step on how to address that. And some of them are concrete steps and some of them may be, we need to look at it more as, it's more aspirational or whatever.
So it sounds like you all need some more time to mark up the draft here? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I think these, I think we could, I think we could resolve what needs to be added today if everybody's willing to do that.
Well, let's start with the one you just said, observation 10.
Yeah, I mean, because...
Tell me what, say it again.
Oh, gosh, what did I say? We had a lot of discussion around the budget, around the budget. And the...
Collaboration between...
Collaboration has made it between Metro Finance and MDHA in order to analyze and predict future, analyze and predict future TIF requirements from a vegetarian, looking at Joe back there, from a budget planning perspective. Because we don't need to be looking at this a year at a time. We need to be looking at this long-term so that you know what's coming over three to five years' timeframe. That's what I'm trying to get to, so that everybody isn't in a position where they go, surprise, TIF is going up X amount, nobody saw it coming.
Right, right. Well, I think, I think knowing that that process is going on would make me feel better than somebody at least being intentional about this. The city's saying, we think we need to spend X million dollars on this.
If you're paying attention to it long-term, then you can say, okay, what do you think your capacity is?
Right, right.
But that's kind of observation 10, councilman. I do think that that component's kind of missing over here. And I do think you need to address the public comment. And then I was also wandering around, I think you guys touched on it and it may be buried in here somewhere for this kind of impact analysis. And I don't know if that's going to, as far as an observation, that might be able to be worked into one of these other...
I think you've got that...
Observations, it could just be, yeah, I think it's there, but it's not crystal clear that it's there.
So I think you've got it when you create a district for, you've got it when it comes up every decade.
Right.
And you've also got it for size. So at the beginning, and as it continues, and then if it's over $3 million, you've got all of those points to look at the impact.
On the observations, it might not be listed in the observations.
It's not as, right, it's not as clear unless, that's what I was wondering.
So we do, so I think, I think you're, I think you're both right. I think there's multiple recommendations about it, but there really isn't an observation to...
To tie.
To match it. So how would you say that?
I'm not the best one. We need a lawyer to...
To the idea...
Take it along with the word cap.
The idea for the, the idea for the observation would be...
You like that?
Yeah. So the observation would be, right now, there doesn't appear to be a uniform, agreed-upon way to assess the impact of tax and government financing in any particular area.
Exactly. Uniform...
So that's, the observation is, like, right now, people would disagree about it. There's not really a way to assess it. And then the recommendations sort of cover it.
Exactly. I don't have more.
You got one more? Lay it out.
No, and I talked about this in the early meetings. I do think because of the mayor's initiative around minority of small businesses...
Good, I like that.
That we need to have an observation in that area, I think, if we don't implement that.
What do you think we would observe?
The participation level.
The participation. Yeah. And I think that's important to your focus as well.
Actually, let me ask Mr. Kane something.
Or at least be transparent about how that's happening.
I could have swore that at one of our earlier meetings, that we had heard that MDHA does not require minority participation goals for TIF recipients.
They do.
But...
They do, they don't go back to...
Require goals. Require goals.
But they don't follow up to make sure they meet the goals.
I did follow up. We did, we did report on the goals.
Was it the, I think, was the data that you presented that you may have a 20% goal, but the actual may be 18%, and then it's just 18%? I'm just making up, is that what I remember hearing?
I think that's right. It was, it was, but it was like 200% of the actual public funds that went into it.
Yeah, the DBE.
The DBE goal was included in the private participation side. And so if you had $100 million and we had $10 million worth of TIF into it, we would get, well, we would try to get $20 million goal. We would not be successful getting $20 million for that, but we were successful in getting about 14 million. And we only had $10 million worth of public funds into it.
And that has stayed constant, that's the amount of DBE.
Even though we were trying to get to the 20, we were trying to get to 20% of the overall project and we're not successful all the time. We were successful on getting 100% of our investment back through the DBE.
So we have a process, but you guys probably don't wanna understand.
Well, we reported.
No, we reported what the actual was. We reported as well, along with our others, our direct contract.
And I would suspect that it's, that you've got that broader definition of...
It's not up to transparency.
We used the definition, right?
Just to paint.
So what do you guys think?
We're using it if I'm looking, because I mean, there are lots of, like, the small guys that are watching us and trying to figure out where they fit in this process. And I don't know that that is necessarily an observation that's here in there.
I think one of the, to Richard's point about being more knowledgeable and having a broader, more comprehensive approach during the six-month process is inherent in the very nature of it is it's very intense and labor-intensive and finance-intensive to even participate. So then the question becomes, how does one enhance participation of these very, very small companies or whatever? And I think, I'm not gonna say, well, they don't need to participate because they're too little. I'm not saying that. But I do think that there needs to be some encouragement. And the models that I have seen, not for TIF, but for other kinds of participation to enhance the smaller groups are encouraging partnerships between the majors and the small. That doesn't work because a lot of times, the larger ones will go through all kinds of machinations to make it look like they're doing something and they haven't done anything, number one. Then number two, there needs to be a much more welcoming environment and a much more open-door policy towards the smaller ones than may be the norm for majors who are involved in these processes.
Are you looking at...
I think you could look at observation five and just blow that out a little bit.
Well, we pick up that...
Just blow it up a little bit.
Recommendation number seven.
Just blow up the observation, blow up that out a little bit.
Because I'm trying to figure whether it's the borrowers or the contractors on the projects. Because they're really two different...
Right.
Right, so let's...
I think they're both.
Let's...
Oh, yeah, I agree both, but they're two different things.
Let's swing through talking about the recipients and then circle back to the contractors. For the recipients, which is what you were just talking about, I do think the idea of, well, first of all, we do have recommendations about it.
Yes.
So having, having, right. That's a good idea.
Does that make sense? I think it's there, it's one made on it.
So circling back to the contractors. So, I mean, I think that what Mr. Kane just described, I mean, to, I don't know how much on the mic it was, so I'll repeat it. If you imagine a $100 million project and it's a $10 million TIF loan, the goal that MDHA asks the contractor to do is to do 20% minority participation on the entire project. So even though the TIF is 10 million, they're asking for a goal of minority participation of 20 million, 20% of the entire project. And they're, they're running, achieving about 14%. So that is about 1.4 times the amount of the TIF awarded, which I think...
Is good.
Puts them in a pretty good position. And so if we were gonna have an observation or a recommendation about that, I think it would be, good job, carry on and talk about it more.
That's a good job. Well, in that scenario, you're doing more of that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, since this is about TIF, we're gonna focus on the TIF. But I think we also wanna ultimately focus on the whole project. So if it's 20%, we don't need, yeah, you did a good job, you're on the way. So what else are you gonna do to get to 20?
Okay, that's a good, that's a good point. So do you guys mind if we have an observation that describes that status and, I mean, just what you just said, it would just basically repeats the reporting?
Yeah. I will say, they, the developer does submit to us in writing a plan as to how they plan to achieve the 20% goal that is established. And then at the end of the project, they report back on where they, where they got to. And so it's, and they, a lot of times, obviously, I mean, the goal, they usually are coming in at the 20, sometimes they're coming above the 20, sometimes they're coming in at 17%. And then when they pull these things out, at the end of the day, there's also variances on them. But of course, it's...
People need to know that, that piece of it too, Joe, because that's, that's a good story.
Yeah, it is.
Well, that's good news and we need to...
It's something that's gotten dramatic with the network since I've been involved in this. I mean, we just played lip service to minority participation and it didn't really happen. And now it really does happen. I mean, these general contractors have figured out, this is something I'm gonna be graded on and I've gotta figure out how to make this happen. And so I think it's, I think it's improved a lot.
And I appreciate your point that it has improved.
Yeah.
Because very often one hears, why you always gotta pull, you know, the DBE card or the whatever other card. And I think unless you're very focused and intentional about it, it doesn't happen. And I also think that if there are not repercussions, repercussions when you don't meet the goals has a way of making you, enabling you to meet the goals.
And it may not feel like there are a lot of repercussions to the minority contractors, but I just know from talking to them, the, this is something that's on people for poor parts. And the general contractors realize, I don't wanna get graded on how well I do on this metric. And so I think they are incentivized to try and do that, even up being momentarily kind of, get there, fix the project. And any given project, things just happen, you know, you develop a project and somebody goes broke or you have to add another contractor to meet a time deadline or something else. And so it's hard to say, well, I had a plan to get to 20% and then things happen. And like Joe said, sometimes it winds up being 22, sometimes it winds up being 17. It's, that's why it's a goal and not a hard pass number. But I do think there's a story that we need to tell.
Is there, Joe, is, is that, I mean, is that out on a website somewhere or, because, you know, I've never, I've never seen it.
My response was, who reads the report card and how do you get it? Because one of the things about a lot of data for Metro, it exists, but by the time the effort and energy you have to spend to finding it, it just, it's very discouraging.
Yeah. I, I think very clear from what we've heard for the last six months. So that's definitely one thing we're gonna work on is being able to make it easily and readily available on. I think our reports, and I'll, I'll have to refer where they are, but I think they get blended together with our direct contract as well. And so they're not necessarily isolated out where you can find the TIF versus the other. But I'll, that's obviously one of the issues that's gonna...
I guess a lot of those slides, is the, are you firm enough on that 14% for us to use it?
I would go get it and pull it back. I had it that day when I reported and I had all the hard numbers. So, but I don't, obviously, I don't have it here, so...
And that could be an observation in and of itself.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And then, you know, I'm talking out loud so you interrupt me before I say, but we could include that in the TIF annual report that we file with the council, just to, you know, at least in aggregate, DBE spending. So that that's a lot easier for people to see. And not to jump around, but the recommendation that goes to the borrower, the number seven says lower cost, I think we need some explorer lowering or, I mean, obviously, there's pieces of that that are outside of all of our control, but I think everybody wants to see if we can figure out some program in which to do that, to lower the cost of borrowing, et cetera. But I'm not sure we've got exclusive control.
So I made, I just made a little note about explorer and we'll hit that when we get onto the recommendations. Because I think that's a good point to tell you.
No, 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 I'm good. I mean, I'm...
Those are all great.
Yeah.
Anybody else have observations to add? Because those were all really good.
Yeah. Is there anything else over here, we'll wait to get into the recommendations and make sure we've got the...
On observation number two, I think part of the confusion in all of this is... On Observation Number Two, I think part of the confusion in all of this is the, I mean, the legislation, the state legislation very specifically goes to blight. It does not go to economic development. And I think if you push those at the state to interpret this, would say, well, you don't get to use it for affordable housing. And I think that's part of the confusion that's out there. I think it's the right observation. I think we just might need to tinker with it a little bit, because we are acknowledging kind of the limitation in which it has.
Well, so, okay, anybody else have, I've got a thought about that.
I have a thought that it's kind of related, but I think overall, some kind of observation that state legislation limits, reduces, restricts, whatever you want to call it...
What you can, can't do.
The implementation, execution, whatever you want to call it, whatever word, of how municipalities, how Nashville, what Nashville can do with TIF. I mean, I think that's really important, and I think people understand that this is not the only area where the legislation prohibits, restricts. And I think it's important to say that somewhere.
You're not just making all this stuff up. They're lost of all.
That is definitely an observation we have all had, is that state law is pretty specific about what's okay and what's not okay.
Yeah, and the IDB TIF, that's got its own limitations. You know, you have this definition of projects and some other things, and so it's, anything that is a creation of state law is just going to have limitations. And that's, I think it's a good observation, because we operate within the confines of what the statute is.
I mean, this is going to make you guys feel a ton better, because you don't have it in front of you, but the, the introduction section, the, like, almost everything that has been talked about so far, it's got some airtime in the, in the introduction section. So it's not going to feel as random when we're, when we get the final thing.
Thank you.
That's good news.
That's...
Yeah.
That's a, that's a good one. Any other observations? I mean, I'm, I'm back to the, you started getting us on this more observations path and talking about wanting to be able to say directly, getting to the core of the misperce... what we call the misperception.
If you don't want to call it misperception, whatever, but there is a...
Well, that feels like it blames the public for not understanding.
Okay. Well, there is a notion of what TIF is and is not, and what it does and does not do that may differ. And so somehow, I think we need to try to educate or bridge the gap, or, I think I said this before, we need to make sure everybody has a, a common understanding, and we start from a common base, and then we can go from there. Because what I am hoping, that part of what the committee's work can do is help people know more about it. And then if we are not exploring all of the creative possibilities to at least generate conversation and hopefully action that allows us to be as creative, innovative, and strategic as we can be.
Brian, and I would echo that. I mean, this, the first observation, I think, speaks to the lack of a common set of facts. And over here, we've got, you know, four or five different recommendations around education. But it would be really great if we could figure out some common set that we, we would come to. And I don't know whether that's possible. I mean, we, we've said we needed and we laid out how to do it. But it would be, it would be interesting if we, if there were some that we could figure out. I'm not sure that's...
Yeah.
Brian, do you think what we got working is going to address this?
I think so.
Okay, great.
It's all we have. We have great confidence.
Well, I mean, it's not...
It's all we have.
The way we started this conversation, it's not, it's not going to settle the question of, you know, doing some kind of cost benefit of the entire downtown.
Right.
And whether or not, you know, the rest of the county subsidize downtown, or downtown subsidizes. I mean, that's, that's the point. That's largely the point here, is that we don't have the methodology instructors set up in order to answer those questions the way they need to be answered. So I don't want anybody to think that, you know, this, this report is going to somehow take a stab at answering that question quantitatively. Right? And we're all, we all understand that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. But yes, they will be, I think it'll be addressed in a qualitative manner.
And all I'm saying is that, and I agree, that next steps from this committee's work needs to be trying to find somebody who can, because I think that would put to rest a lot of conversation and a lot of distrust.
Yeah, I agree. Well, so...
And it may not solve it all, but at least we, like you were talking about in Austin.
Right.
Having a good set of facts is a great way to start a conversation that doesn't necessarily make the conversation go away.
So you guys are taking my word for the intro's going to lay out a bunch of the...
Trust me.
It's at least going to lay out...
Well, you did a good job on transit and affordability, and you did that by yourself. But that's not really true, but you know what I mean. Somebody has to start it.
So if the quality of this one is poor, we'll know who's the blame. Dragging it down as soon as there is no...
No.
So, so that intro section is going to do a good job of pointing out information gaps and tensions between some, one group thinks one thing, another group receives something else. It's, it's going to lay that out. The question for right, the second, is whether we need to beef up the observations to, to, I guess, I would hear pointing, like, we need, we need the path. Like, I guess we don't really know the path, but...
But that's the long-term.
Yeah, I don't, I guess, I'm not even speaking in complete sentences. What do you mean by the path? How we get from currently, people don't see it the same way, to one day, people seeing it the same way. And we, we observe Observation One, people don't see it the same way.
I think if you go to your recommendations, I mean, the...
All of those collectively, I don't know what else they have.
Communication and education lay out different examples without making a judgment about what the result is.
Well, let's, let's switch to the recommendations, and then if somebody along the way comes up with an observation we should add back in.
Before we go to Observation...
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's, you're saying it's in the introductory materials, but somewhere, I don't know if this, it needs to be highlighted again, the discussion we've just had about the absence in the field, if you will, of methodologies or approaches to quantitatively make a definitive or empirically irrefutable statement about impact, or, you know, something like that. I mean, I'm, I'm just throwing out ideas that...
We're lacking a common set of facts about...
That says it a little bit, but it doesn't say anything about the methodology.
Yeah, yeah. I'm okay with...
Our approach, whatever.
Would your preference be second observation that goes with it, or beef up one to include methodology also?
I, I think I'd rather have it as a separate standalone fact, because then they'll say, well, how come y'all didn't do this? I was looking for this, that, and the other. I wanted some numbers or whatever.
Well, I think, I think we definitely have all agreed that there's not a common methodology about how to assess the impact. So I'm okay with that being an observation.
Now, does that, okay, wait a minute, because I have, under Observation Ten, and I know that, I have now lack of a uniform way to assess TIF impact, and so that sounds like what we're talking about is a possible new two and ten are very related.
I don't know.
I had Ten as having more to do with budget...
MPAG and Department of Finance?
Budget predictability.
Okay, well then, okay. Well, I just had that statement in there, under there, so wherever it goes is fine.
All right. Let's hit the recommendations. Do you want to go one by one, or just kind of go around the table with notes on... I think Charles Roberts on the clock because of the thing he's got to take care of, so I'm thinking about getting his comments first.
So Seven, which I noted, ready to now.
Yeah.
So Seven, which I noted, which Explorer, which you...
So let's talk about that a little bit. So your, your point on that is the, we've identified that there's barriers to entry, and we really like there to be reduced barriers to entry. As we sit here today, we all think that that requires some, some, some new factor in the dynamic, because either a lender's got to decide to relax their guarantee rules, or somebody else, a government, has to back up.
Or get a lien on Bradley A. Rent to come up with some reduced legal fee.
Personal legal workers, all the way through.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting we water it down, but I think we're going to have to figure out how that, that works.
What do you all think about that point?
Well, I mean, I've got a comment on the next sentence, that examples are the ability to... I, I know the context there, I mean, just mentioned, but if I were reading this carefully and I saw examples are the ability to operate, the question would be, well, whose ability to operate?
I think it would be examples are the possibility for the government act as a guarantor and/or to establish a program that would work to reduce the transaction cost for small loans.
Say the last half of it again?
And/or establish a program that would work to reduce the transaction cost for small loans.
Who must have bored Adam?
So let me...
Go find a better...
Can I, can I, can I push on this a little bit?
Yes.
Are, are we saying that this committee wants to make a recommendation that government, meaning Metro, should...
I assume it's MDHA.
I think this is saying explore lowering, we didn't say do it.
Yeah.
Uh-uh.
I think, so, first sentence about exploring, I think, I think that's a, a good point. The second sentence, I would want, like, whatever we put in the back two-thirds of that sentence, the first third should be examples may include.
May include.
Because I don't think...
Yeah.
I think we're all real clear that we don't know the answer.
I think we've got some ideas that might be worth exploring, but...
Well, I think one of the important things we hit on somewhere in the course's process is there are some things we're going to make recommendations on today, and there are other things we're going to identify that need further study and some continuing process.
So on the first third of that sentence, I'm going to have it say, examples may include. For the back two-thirds, so he was talking about MDHA.
It doesn't have to be MDHA, but I think that's the, that's where the crux of this sits. And I think if somebody else can go out and figure out how to standardize some of this, that, all the better.
But that is where the state law basically rests for the operation of the bulk of these, unless you...
It's MDHA.
Better for worse. That's when you set up a redevelopment district, they're the ones that take care of it. But I, I do think it's interesting on the Industrial Development Board...
Yeah.
The hard part is that in MDHA, you've got people that are out there working, trying to learn, know, do, have a job, that that's your responsibility. When you get to the IDB, there's, there just isn't, don't feel like there's somebody whose job it is out there to work through it.
There's definitely not. So, Brian, how do you feel about that?
I would be more comfortable if there was some language in there saying, you know, subject to somebody identifying the pros and cons of local governments, whether it's quasi or Metro, serving as the guarantee. And I know I've said this at least once, I mean, coming from Texas and our unique perspective on how aggressive local government should be on economic development, I was very surprised at the conservative nature and use of TIF here. The fact that I couldn't find an example where a local government has served as a guarantee on, on a loan.
Right.
So by linking these statements, saying lower barriers, and then the next sentence saying local government serving as a guarantee, we're, we're teeing ourselves up for the question of, well, is the committee suggesting that it's a good idea for the government to serve as a guarantee on a TIF loan?
I think you certainly ought to explore it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think somebody should. I mean, I think there should be a, kind of a thorough analysis of that. I'm just, I'm just bringing up what I know the question's going to be.
I think once somebody gets into that issue, it's going to look, it's going to get more and more complicated.
And I think Charles Roberts and/or, I mean, it was, so the way I have it, if I piece everybody's comments together, it would be, subject to further analysis, examples may include the possibility of a governmental entity acting as guarantor and/or establishing a program to lower transaction costs.
Maybe we say guarantor or partial guarantor. I mean, I, I mean, I get that that's a, a step over the line, but I mean, I think at the same time, if we agree as a committee that TIF is a useful tool when used responsibly, and that we want a more diverse application of TIF, both in borrower recipient and geographically diverse, I think we know we're going to have to figure out some way to break down some of those barriers. And I, you know, I'm not sure that we can get there unless we take a little bit more bold step. But I think by just saying explore and some other things, I'm, I'm not sure we're, I think all we have to do is stick to the first piece of that to say, we want it to have a more diverse application.
Okay.
When used responsibly. And we know what the barriers are, and let's continue to explore in ways in which maybe to reduce those barriers that's maybe not as definitive.
Okay.
If that makes sense. I mean, it is, I mean, we, we are shifting this from a risk-free program to the government to potentially a portion of it being at risk. But I think I could argue that the benefits of that probably outweigh the downside of that.
What else you got?
I assume Number Ten is the real kind of crux, and it kind of goes to your legislation that's kind of pending out there.
Yeah, we, have you got more, or we can talk about...
We can come back to that. On Eleven, who is going to, and I know this kind of goes back to what we were talking about earlier, but who do we think will contact? Is that...
So the other P, on, on Eleven, the other thing, when I, when I wrote this one, I looked at the distribution of loan amounts and, and just sort of tried to figure out what a, you know, a substantive loan might be, and I picked $3 million. I don't know that that's the right number, so you may want to think about that, too.
And I think there, it's, you know, I'm kind of conflicted. I mean, it's easy for MDHA to do that, since it's all in-house, and we're having to analyze it. At the same time, kind of Paulette's point, whether it's this physical impact analysis or a broader one, I think who engages that group to do that study...
Is it ECD?
...is important so that it's, so that it's accepted as a reliable...
And it's not going to be a cheap, that's not something that's cheap either.
What do you consider cheap?
Well, so, to me, the...
I mean, just generally, that's the transaction cost.
Yeah. Yeah, so to me, it's, and what I'm thinking is, you know, the developer's going to be writing the check for that as a part of the process, would be my guess. I've thought about the contract and board. So that they would pay for it, I'm just not sure.
Yeah.
And the 3 million?
Is about a $30 million project. TIF's typically around that or was around 10%. And it feels like what that's doing is for these really big ones that are out there, like the, especially these multi-property projects. That's a good, I think that's a good idea.
What do you think the threshold should be, if not three?
I think three is, I think three is fine. You're probably, you would, it'd be the five or six really big ones that are out there.
Yeah.
Which probably need that kind of review scrutiny would be helpful.
To your point about the who and trying to address Paulette's question, I think that's a good point. I guess I had it in my head, not thinking about Paulette's point, that we're leaving approval at M.D.H.A. and so somewhere that's, I had it in my head that that would be M.D.H.A. slash developer. But you're, I guess you're making the point of, like, if people are complaining about not knowing stuff, like, how does that, how does that matter?
Yeah, but I mean, I do think, kind of coming out of this, that we know we are shining a much brighter spotlight on TIF and how it's done and what we post and when we post it and go through all that analysis, that hopefully that part of it can be improved upon. And as I sit here and think about it, I mean, I think from M.D.H.A. standpoint, I've got to advocate that the analysis of TIF loans and all that needs to stay within M.D.H.A. and if we go too far out of that, saying that, that not only are we going to get a third party involved, but somebody else is going to control that third party and now we just slowed down and made, so I mean, I think almost M.D.H.A. has to be the one contracting with that, but I think as we do that, we got to make sure that we're doing a good job of communicating who we're engaging, while we're engaging, have those conversations with no one other advocates and community groups so that they see it and it's widely shown.
So this is the model I'm familiar with and so I'm probably a little biased on this. I think this function works best when it lives inside something like the finance department. It's, you're not involving for-profit consulting firms, which come with obvious downsides and perception. You're not involving universities where there may be proprietary considerations from academic researchers. This is not rocket science. I mean, so as long as the shop was kind of properly resourced, you know, I think finance and M.D.H.A. could work something out where we could have this capability in-house.
Here's my only concern is, so fast forward to 10 years down the road and it's a different set of players, right? And none of these people are at the table and you have an administration who doesn't want to do TIF or does want to do TIF. And so now they've got the ability to manipulate that in a way that has, I mean, the control that TIF sets at M.D.H.A. for better or worse, and I think we're locking in on a set of recommendations that will improve upon that and will increase the transparency of that. But potentially by taking that some other place, then we have shifted control over it effectively to some other place.
Let me ask you this question because you were concerned over the Donaldson TOD project, but you didn't think the numbers had been adequately vetted. And so what would have given you comfort?
It's a little bit apples and oranges because that was a planning for a district as opposed to an individual loan.
Right.
And we've got other recommendations, recommendation 13.
Right.
Addresses my concern on the Donaldson TOD. This one's a little bit different. This one is saying, and I mean, this, the ethos behind this one is, hey, when we're going to do the big ones, let's make sure the M.D.H.A. board understands in a way that's visible to the public with objective data, whether it's going to make a significant enough impact on the community to be worthwhile investment of tax increment dollars.
That was different than what I understood. I was thinking about, and I get the difference, I share your concern about the multi-parcial districts are a different handle.
Yeah.
Make sure you get that right. I haven't had any concern with all the ones that I've seen on these parcel-by-parcel things. I mean, I think M.D.H.A. has a really good handle on how much revenue is going to get produced and how much it's going to take to service the loan and so forth. And so I don't know that, I feel like that's what is the third-party analysis, but it sounds to me like you're saying it's more of an impact, economic impact thing. Is this worth $3 million of our TIF money? Is that more what you're looking for?
Yes, so there's the upside story, not whether or not just, you know, does the project work.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, what are, what are the impacts on the community of the project? Positive, you know, on the, on the, on the both sides of the letter, right? I mean, that's, that's where I think a lot of the criticism's coming from. It's the cost of growth and somebody, to me at least, I mean, a good fiscal impact analysis should address all of that.
But this is like more the kind of analysis you have of, we're going to host the NFL draft.
No, well, it's not a traditional economic impact analysis where it's just the direct, the indirect, and the induced. That's not what I'm talking about. You know, I'm talking about the cost of government, basically. And that's the difference between, it's kind of a standard economic impact approach and a fiscal impact approach.
One example would be if you had a project that was going to have 300 kids live in it.
Right.
As opposed to one with zero kids, then it's a different cost on the school system.
Right.
For other government services.
This didn't necessarily say that. I mean, I get what you're saying now that you say it, but that's not an example of this recommendation.
That was going to be, if we could clarify more what that, because fiscal impact can mean a lot of things. And so if that could get clarified, it'd make a whole lot easier because I'm sitting here trying to think how we would ever do that. And if I may make another observation, the, as Bert mentioned, $3 million would give you $30 million. Well, that's 100, approximately 100-unit apartment building. If we're putting affordable housing into 100-unit apartment building, do you want to go through that extra step or is that all of a sudden kind of a no-brainer?
Does that trumpet?
Yeah, because it's kind of a no-brainer, it's affordable housing, we already know that these are priorities, or do we want to go through the expense and, and I know it's a hard thing to call, but I just want to make that observation, but a $30 million project today is not that big of a project in Nashville. Now I know our goal there is to be able to get much smaller projects also.
All right, so now we're talking about four or five things.
We all have sandballs.
Like we got consensus on that.
All right, so that's a good point. Come back to that. Joe's first comment about, and I guess Richard's also, is the, can we say more about what we mean by fiscal impact analysis? If you were going to say that in a sentence, what do you mean, Brian?
I can do that. I can wordsmith it and mark this up.
All right, so we're going to add a sentence and if you were going to say a sentence or a couple sentences, now that you're going to get down to a sentence, it would be.
The benefits and costs of a project to the community. And that's, and I think that encompasses both sides of the letter.
Question.
What kind of benefits?
Additional tax revenue, jobs, wages, lots of benefits. And on the cost, I mean, it's.
Does it include things like pretty affordable housing and Britain space and those kind of things are hard to number on?
I mean, not traditionally, but I mean, you could, I guess.
I have a long conversation with somebody about social impact bonds, so that may be.
I love the chart that you showed that they had done, that you all had done in Austin, but I think we've got to make sure that we're not co-mingling TIF and the purposes of TIF with standard kind of economic incentives, where some of that analysis is probably more appropriate and prevalent than just on the TIF side, given kind of the legislation that kind of teaches us.
So the recommendation is we need to.
I love the scoring, I love at the heart of it, kind of a scoring system that says, yeah, of course we're doing this one, right? Because.
I'm glad we're talking about this because I do think one of the things, one of the things that is out in the public conversation is how to balance the, we don't get any property tax revenue to pave roads and pay for cops and firefighters and teachers versus the, yeah, but there's all this other revenue coming in, so we're good here. There really isn't, again, back to this common set of facts and I assume, like, I have no idea what analysis on a $4 million TIF would end up looking like in the end, but some tally of the pros and the cost and the money benefits from it would seem like it would at least go toward that common set of facts.
So is the recommendation to create a matrix or?
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
Or something, it's more of, you know, figure out what that.
M.D.H.A. and that to finance to work together to figure out.
What that looks like.
And maybe instead of contract, right? Maybe, maybe, some of that may be a little, may be internal and/or maybe on some of the factors that Richard mentioned, maybe it's a little more subjective than it is objective, but to be able to.
But you don't go straight to the contract.
Absolutely, right.
You've got this kind of norm step that you go through first.
Well, and I guess your point of thinking that, you know, having finance house some of the functionality.
Well, the reason I wrote it this way was so resources would follow intent. And if you're not going to contract, then, you know, somebody's going to have to commit the resources to doing this. It's not really, it's less expensive than I think a lot of people would imagine to do, just somebody needs to be trained to do it well. But as long as we agree down a methodology, I don't think it would matter much where it would land. As long as it's a transparent methodology, everybody agrees with it.
I'm in a TIF position, finance, and pipeline.
I have no budget.
I would, instead of just metro finance, because you mentioned schools, you know, if we're bringing in 300 kids, planning serves a huge part. I mean, because, not that they necessarily be doing the analysis of it, they would be providing, this area's growing or this school's shrinking and there's more, or something like that.
And we talked about that before.
I think it'd be all of metro.
You were saying that.
All the metro government would be in resource.
How do you guys, there's a couple places where we've, we say M.D.H.A. and somebody to figure some stuff out. How do you guys feel about having this be M.D.H.A. and finance create a methodology to complete a fiscal impact analysis for loans over 3 million?
Yes.
I think that's great.
Yeah.
And we can lean on planning as we.
As a resource.
I have to write that before I forget.
I know.
Paul.
One of the things that we brought up earlier on was the absence of a comprehensive approach for how we wanted growth and development to be because that would have some impact and that it's been concentrated in certain areas and there's no mention of that in here that I see, either in the observations or the recommendations. And I know that this is a conversation that many people are having with planning, et cetera, so.
I'll tell you my thought about that and then every time I do that, we end up at a different place, so that's.
That's the mark of a good leader.
So my thought had been that, and you're, I already can hear you say that this is too subtle. My thought had been by installing the every 10-year review, the got-to-reassess, that we're going to find out what the, what the city thinks on districts every 10 years and if, and if the city's had its, you know, feels like there shouldn't be new loans or can't figure out what new loans would be for in a new, in a district after 20 years, then that would necessarily push interest in a different direction. And I thought the, building that process of the got-to-reach agreement every 10 years, we either have it or we don't, and that was better than saying we need to be in other places. I worry about saying we need to be, we need districts in other places because part of what we heard is you just can't will redevelopment district into a place because you think you want to spread them around because there's market conditions have to be right. TIF isn't providing 50% of the equity, TIF is providing a sliver of the equity. And so a district has to be in a place where conditions are right, where adding a sliver of equity makes a difference. And that's why, that's how I thought that it's balanced. But it is, I mean, that took, you know, a while to say, so. What do you guys think? Anybody? I mean, she's, she's got a fair point of like, the, if I was going to say it in a sentence, like, how come we don't have districts anywhere else? Like, let's move them around, there's other places in need it. Why is it all downtown? I mean, that's a concern.
Or, for example, there's been a redevelopment district in North Nashville and the complaint here is nothing has happened. So the fact that it is a redevelopment district does not guarantee that there's going to be activity. That's the only, one of the few places where there's low-cost land. So, I mean, I'm just.
Let's keep, keep going on that one because I think that that is, that is, I think you're exactly right. I mean, you've got a redevelopment district, you've got low-cost land, you've got all these ingredients to be able to make something happen.
I think, to me, recommendation seven and eight are the, are the ones that are dealing with that because I'd make the argument that that's where you get transaction costs and to be in the way. You know, if you've got smaller parcels on Jefferson Street, you can't put up a gulch-sized building.
I'm talking about Jolton.
Bordeaux.
In Bordeaux, Bordeaux.
I'd make the argument, I don't think you, I don't think the market would put up a gulch-sized building in Bordeaux, I think.
But is there any interim before you get to gulch-sized buildings?
I think that's why you got to lower the transaction cost because I think the, I mean, Bert and Richard and Charles Robert are going to know better than me on this, but if you have a $10 million project, I think it's, it's hard to make TIF work because of the cost of the loan and just the transactional difficulty. And if you're, if you're capital, you're just generally dollars looking for a place to land and you're looking to land in a $10 million project, you know, those transaction costs can cut into the return. I mean, guys, mine, off-base. And so to me, the, if you want to make Bordeaux have TIF, a place I really want to figure out, is there some form documents that you could use that turns, you know, the $30,000 legal fee into $10,000?
I think the focus is on the right place where we identify barriers to entry. I think that's all we really can do because there is a market component to this. I mean, it took the gulch forever to take off. You know, I mean, I would win first TIF loan that made it to gulch, it was a long time ago, and then it kind of sat there for a while. And so it's a, it's a, it's a long process.
Yeah.
And I think as a part of this, I mean, to those who are looking to do development and even those who understand how TIF works, given the work of this committee, given these recommendations and given just the general conversation that's out there, you're, I think you're going to see people look to do some things in some other development districts. One, because the gulch in downtown are pretty much full.
And very expensive.
And very expensive. And so, I mean, I think, and as people knock on the economic, the ECD office door or M.D.H.A. door, I think one of the responses is going to be, listen, if you're looking to do a project that has TIF involved, you need to look at some of these other redevelopment districts. I don't think that has to be said here, but I just feel things evolving that way.
I guess, I think that there's an intentionality that government must have. I don't think, what I'm hearing is largely a market. what I'm hearing is largely a market force, other kind of force, forces make these things happen, and that's true to a certain extent. But I think sometimes there has to be a catalyst. Sometimes there has to be a vision that says, you know, we can make X, Y, Z, or we can't for whatever reasons. And I'm just concerned that I'm not seeing that notion specifically articulated here.
Well, I think you see in other places, and for instance, when government decides to spend money on infrastructure. I mean, I look at the bridge over 28th and 31st Avenue. I mean, that completely transformed that neighborhood over there. And that was a pure governmental-driven, we're going to build a bridge over railroad track, and we're going to kind of connect different parts of town. And, and that's something that's intentional that government can do. And I think TIF loans can follow along behind that. You know, somebody says, okay, now that you've, you've made this, this area of Charlotte Avenue more attractive and more connected to other parts of town, I want to go get a TIF loan and build a building. But you probably don't start out with saying, could I encourage somebody to get a TIF loan on Charlotte Avenue and have that kind of transformational impact? So I think, I think there are a lot of different levers. I don't want to try and do too much with TIF.
Sure, I agree.
It's, it's a tool, but it's not necessarily the one that I would look to first, I was trying to transform part of town.
Well, is there, trying to, to balance these things, is there a recommendation, I'm definitely posing this as a question, that, that would, this is going to be a dumb statement, but I'll keep going, that would basically encourage an active plan to, to make the districts that are lagging get more traction?
I mean, I think that already happens informally. I mean, we've said it here many times, and Joe Kane has said, you don't need to do more TIF loans in the gulch right now unless it's for something that wasn't going to happen on its own, like affordable housing or something else you might identify a particular need. But I think that's part of MDAHA's equation now. And if somebody comes in and says, I've got a great plan for North Nashville, I think that would be...
Would be the conversation.
And I think in part, that's seven and eight. It's not completely seven and eight, but I think it's, that's a, that's a B7. And I think that is an effort to be more intentional. And I, I agree with what Paul says. At the same time, we can't force development in some place.
But, and maybe...
We're not turning down loans in these development districts. Nobody's applying.
Exactly.
I think the intentionality thing's a good point, and maybe, you know, in evaluating projects, be mindful of communities that have been not benefited as much from development.
I think there are two things that are a part of this. One is, you know, my thought has been on this TIF 101 piece, is that you actually go out in these development districts, especially the ones that aren't being used, and just have, it's me meetings until people stop showing up so that you, so the developers that are working in those particular areas get a path, so that if you're the, you know, if you're working in that area, you would learn how to do it. Would be one thought. And then I think, I'm really struggling with the, are we confusing TIF the tool? Not confusing, but TIF the tool is different from the economic development policy of the city.
Yeah, right.
And they're two, they really are two different things.
Yeah. I mean, that, I, I'm sitting here, Richard's going about infrastructure. You know, the city could go in there, into that district and...
Do something.
And lay out a bunch of infrastructure and, and have the, that area equivalent version of the bridge. And, and the question is, okay, would we have a field of dreams scenario? Would we build it and then everybody came? Or would we be sitting out there with some infrastructure and, and still, and still the market didn't like it?
So you look at, you look at what's going on in Antioch today. You know, you build a, you know, you build a ice rink, you incentivize, they're, they're just all different sort of things that...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Antioch had a failed project.
Right.
That lay barren for a while. And then, but again, to me, that just reinforces a point about the intentionality and an adaptive reuse of something that was a failed kind of project. I mean, I don't want to belabor it, and I think you really do make a good point about TIF the tool versus economic development. And I see, I just think we need to be, to draw the connections more clearly and, and more definitively whenever we can. One of the things that was said when Charles was talking about the analysis and et cetera, staying within MDAHA because of the fear that new actors, new players may manipulate the data. And I think that's one of the concerns with it being an MDAHA, for whatever, whether that's an accurate idea or not, you know, that's just something that we need to, to think about. I really like government being able to do what it can, but like, as we have in '14 with IDBD, that was one of the concerns for me, that they have no staff, no anybody, so whatever we're talking about, you're looking for a group of volunteers who don't even meet monthly to kind of take the lead, and I just think that's probably unrealistic.
Oh, somebody, maybe Bob threw out the idea that maybe there's a memorandum, you're staying with MDAHA and borrow staff from them, and just let MDAHA have two statues towards them.
So let's, let's get back to the number we're on, which...
Seven and eight.
Yes.
And we keep going back to them, too.
Yeah. So, the intro part, I'm gonna add...
It's going to fix it there?
Well, I'm, I'm going to add something, because it's not in there now, about this tension between TIF as a tool versus overall economic plan development. So there'll be a little, there'll be some context there for that.
Can I add, so it's, it's hard for me not being in the city, so to speak, about, well, MDAHA ought to do this, or planning ought to do this, or, a lot of it depends, or finance ought to do this. I mean, you know, it depends, that just, it just seems really...
The bureaucracy boggles the mind.
Well, so much depends on who the particular head of MDAHA might be, or the head of Finance. I mean, I can think of a time in Finance where I'm not sure you would want them, you know, if you're trying to slow growth or whatever, you know, different, or planning. Depending on who those heads are, I just, anyway, I just, well, it's a general comment to say, I feel like we're trying to tell the city how to operate in a way that, you know, if we all of a sudden have an economic development department, well, I just, somehow that gets confusing to me, so I just wanted to get it out there.
My, my general sense of that is, like, at, at every turn, if there's an issue like that, my mind goes to checks and balances. You know, two departments are better than one. One department doing it, another department checking it, is, is the check on that happening. And nothing, I mean, as we maybe see federally right now, I mean, you'd still sort of get a runaway freight train on something, but at least having to, different eyeballs on it plays defense against the idea of any one department might go crazy for a decade.
And I think this issue, or not issue, but the topic of transparency really helps that a lot, whether...
Yeah. So, let's, Charles Robert, do you have any others besides 10?
Not really. Only on 15A.
Yeah.
Interactive Math. I think MDAHA is pretty far down that path. I might just say MDAHA and the mayor's office have felt that.
Good enough for me.
All right. I shouldn't say far down that path, has begun headed down that path. No one wants to exaggerate, Mr. Kane.
All right. So, back to 10. I'm, I'll go ahead and make my pitch on, on 10. Right now, the percentage is set at 85%, and that's also the maximum percentage. And my argument would be that the percentage should be set somewhere else to leave room to give a lot more if the project is delivering things for Metro that it needs. And y'all know my legislation that's out there would set the percent that, you know, 55-ish percent, 58% of the increment would be available for loans. And what I'm suggesting to the group is that we set a number and have a policy that allows ups and downs. And the, what I'm hoping to reach compromise at is to set it at 70% as the baseline, and then I presume when MDAHA comes up with a policy to put in writing, stuff it already thinks through now, things like, oh, you're doing affordable housing, oh, you're doing infrastructure a block away, great, you're at the max 85%. If it's a whole district, like, okay, that's going to be a lower, that's going to be 60%. Like, I imagine that's what the policy might be. Setting it at some number than 85 allows legitimate rewarding for doing stuff that Metro needs in terms of housing or infrastructure, whatever we come up with. That's my pitch.
Well, for people watching this, you might just want to explain how you get to the 85.
Okay. That's a good point. Right, we talked about that in the past. State law and now city law says that the debt service taxes of the increment have to be saved by Metro. Basically, Metro needs to hold back the money, it needs to pay its long-term debt, bonds and loans. And currently, that's approximately 15%. And so automatically, any new loan being done by, TIF loan being done, would only be able to use 85% of the increment, the other 15% Metro already has to hold on to to pay its long-term debts. And the suggestion here is that we have a policy that sets the standard at 70% and has a written policy that allows, that are the guidelines for MDAHA to go higher or lower depending on the circumstances. And that's my pitch.
And I think, I know, could you articulate why you think reducing it 85% to 70%, what goal it's accomplishing?
It creates a circumstance where you would reward developers with a higher percentage if they were doing things that are good for the public benefit.
And also, there's some immediate benefit to the general public. It doesn't all go into this particular project.
Right. Basically, it's saying, if you got a, if you're just a project that's going up, like, I, I think there's a, I mean, I'm not going to name particular projects, but there, there's projects with no affordable housing, not really much of infrastructure off-site, and they're using 85% of the increment. The argument would be, for that kind of project, it should be 70% of the increment. If you want it to use 85% of the increment, then, you know, some sort of infrastructure, affordable housing piece needs to get added in. And whatever, and, like, we, that would be, MDAHA would set that policy. I understand they sort of do this already informally, it would be a matter of reducing what they're doing internally into written words.
Okay. Question that I've got, and I know that last time you said, I've got legislation that I want to kind of run before this committee or before this cycle is...
Do this term, is that right?
Yes, term is up, but just as, putting my developers' hat absolutely on as opposed to the other, it would certainly be helpful if these were working at the same time, so that you have a policy that goes up and down, at the same time you're capping the number, so that you've got a really good handle on how to, you know, how to bring a project to MDAHA. My worry is that you set the 70% and then go tell the DHA to figure it out, and then there's the whole process of getting that negotiated.
Yeah, loss is certain.
Yeah. And so all of a sudden, you just don't, so, you know, my thought would be that we, we should tie the two, the two together.
So here's what I had, I'd done this, but before that, the policy piece, I mean, I feel like if MDAHA sat down to think about what are all the reasons we'd want to do more, what are the reasons we want to do less, my guess is that a pretty good draft is done by the end of the afternoon, because there's not that many factors. And, and so with, with that being my assumption, what I have in mind, and there's, there's enough time to do it this council term still, but that we would run in the council amendments to the redevelopment plans that say the percent is 70% higher, lower, depending on a policy, to be promulgated by MDAHA. And that's, that basically mirrors exactly what the current situation is. And then because of the, the relative ease of reducing current thought process to writing, that that policy would be in effect by the time the council voted in July. That's, that's what I had in mind.
A couple of things around that. Do you have to go amend every redevelopment district plan, or similar to your previous legislation that took the cap down to 85? Is there an easier way to do that, number one? I mean, that's just a question.
I mean, I think reasonable lawyers could disagree about that. I think...
Here's, here's my worry for the answer. So, we know we've got some development districts where this has not been widely used, and we'd like to see it used more. We've got some that now have political pressures where some in the community would say, we don't need to use it there. So I'm worried is we, that whatever the standard is, and I would suggest 75 instead of 70, that whatever the standard is, then now all of a sudden, we're going to have to go through each plan and negotiate that district by district because of the, the politics that are out there district by district.
So, Mr. Kane and I have talked about this a little bit, and just to share that, so we, we think we could, the, the plans have, a whole bunch of plans have been amended simultaneously in one ordinance previously, and so we think it could be one ordinance that would just list out this plan by plan, what was changing, and that would get it so one public hearing. And so, so just process-wise, we think it'd be that. I, I think the, given the fact that these things are going to be around for so long, amending plans outside of a plan amendment, I think makes it more challenging to keep track of 15 years down the road. And so I, I think it's cleaner to amend the, the plans. But the practical impact is the, the same, whether we do it like the one a few years ago, although one triggers a public meeting hearing.
You and Joe are on the same page. I'm fine.
And one more question, is the policy wanted to be promulgated by MDAHA, is that kind of the step that gets it done, or does the policy go to council also?
I would make the argument that MDAHA should have the policy.
This would be a good test for a little bit of...
Yeah. Well, I mean, to me, this is, this is one of those places where I really believe that if every single TIF loan in the history of mankind in Nashville had been some, had been gone, and everybody could have a Vulcan mind meld with complete information, most people would have been okay with most loans. I, that's what I think.
That's true.
I think. And, and so I'm not necessarily offended by what MDAHA has had a couple people... And so, I'm not necessarily offended by what MDHA has had a couple people batting around in a conversation. I do think the public benefits from having that written down and having it express, and something that MDHA board can be actively judged against. You know, a certain project with no affordable housing and no infrastructure being done off-site in a district that's thriving, if that ends up at 85 percent of the increment, then, you know, people should be mad. If it ends up at the lower number, then that's appropriate.
I might also suggest 75 to just speak with my...
Oh, I thought you were gonna say 80.
That's what I asked. That's what the man said.
Because you can register the next TIF loan that's approved by MDHA, and everybody's gonna say, "Absolutely, of course we should do that."
Well, I mean, we're basically debating 70 versus 85, 70, 75, 85. I mean, I'm willing to put it to the, and basically now we're debating 70 or 75. I'm willing to put it to the group. We got an odd number of people, so, you guys willing to put it to the group?
Sure.
I did no vote counting in advance. I don't know what this kind of... Well, we don't get to do this like blind, somebody's gotta start, so, and I'm the chair. So, I'll go last.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I mean, are we just picking between two numbers here, or is there more backup that should be considered in this?
Ron, don't, don't wait us down.
I'm, I'm, I'm making the argument for, I'm making the argument for 75, or 70, rather. I mean, the argument for 70 is, yeah, of course, they're all numbers. I mean, I did not pick 68.73. So, yeah, it is a made-up number, but, you know, the legislation is the schools fund portion, which is now 40-something percent that would be off the table. I do feel like on small loans, that that would essentially grind things to, it would be hard to do a small loan with that. So, hence the reason for compromise. And 70 leaves, and 80, the 85 number is state law right now, and 70 leaves room for there to be shades of gray. You know, my concern about 75 is that, I mean, there's not gonna be any loans that are at 80, that you're either, it's gonna be 75 or 85. And to me, there's shades of gray between 70 and 85 that lets MDHA's board reward somebody who's doing a little bit for Metro and somebody who's doing a lot bit for Metro. And, but yeah, it's a made-up number.
Can we hear the argument for 75?
Well, I think it allows you to, I think what we know is that the bigger districts where there have been the most activity, there is likely to be less TIF loans going forward as a function of the market, as a function of politics that are out there, and as a function of just capacity. And so, I think it's more likely than not that the more loans we're gonna see, you're gonna be in development districts that have not been as widely used before. And I think if you can start with just a higher baseline, it's more likely that you can have success in doing those. I mean, obviously, the policy and the criteria, I think, will be a good litmus test to make sure that MDHA kind of understands what the will of this body and others have been. But I think if you could get a little bit of higher of the increment, raise that cap just a little bit, I think you're gonna be fine, that you can potentially do more of these.
Is your legislation flexible enough to revisit whatever this number is, like, after three years, something to reassess whether or not, once you've got the data? And it's not just picking a number?
I mean, if we can change it once, we can change it again.
Would you expressly have a provision in there to do that?
I mean, I'd be okay with that. I mean, and Charles Robert, if the policy ended up saying, underutilized, if the loan application's in an underutilized district, by all means, increase the percentage, like, I think, I think we'd all agree that if somebody wanted a TIF loan in Bordeaux, by all means, make it 85 percent, even if they're not doing a whole lot.
Or maybe that's in the criteria that MDHA comes up with?
Yeah.
Where you get a higher number. The two spots that I had is that it really is a toggle up and down. So, you know, you can take it down to 50, or if it's not doing all the things that we talked about. And the piece where this really works is, this is kind of technical, but it's really the amortization term, during you're moving in or out. So, when you set the amount, and you're moving things back and forth, so, a higher number allows you to, in a sense, be in, be able to get in on the tax rolls quicker.
So, the policy in Chattanooga is 75 and 60, right? For short-term and long-term, is that?
Yeah.
Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah.
So, is this policy going to describe the circumstances where we would adjust it downward in addition to upward?
Correct.
So, does, at 75, does 10 percentage points to 85, does that create enough, is that a large enough gap for the, for the policy to incorporate all of the different things you would want to reward?
Incentives. That's, that's really where I'm coming from, is the leaving the up room, where it's a material up for doing stuff that helps Metro, whether I had two affordable housing and infrastructure, a third one would be using underutilized district. And that, I mean, honestly, I, if I were, if I got to parachute into no politics, I would set it pretty low and, and then have different things. So, you do infrastructure, you know, you get another 10 percentage, you do more than that. I think the low with leaving room with a bunch of stuff you're trying to incentivize is the thing to do. I don't think politically I can get away with saying, "Set it at 50, 85's the max," and there's a whole, there's a whole bunch more increment you get if you do goodies we like. And, I mean, that's really where I'm coming out with the 70.
Sorry for all the questions, I just want to make sure I know what I'm voting on here. So, is this motion, is this, is this cap subject to a policy, or are we saying, "Here's what we think the cap should be regardless"? I mean, is that, is that, is that the motion?
Standard.
Yeah, I really, I mean, I feel like it's, I mean, I feel like I'm gonna go have to defend it to my colleagues, because it really is still leaving it all to MDHA, but saying, "The plan will establish just what the baseline is, and there'll be an MDHA policy that'll explain the ups and the downs." And I know I'm gonna hear from some folks that I'm probably, I'm trusting too much.
I will give, I'll make one observation. 75 percent was the number for fifth abroad when the old convention center was rebuilt. So, there has been a, a number that has been, just wanted to refresh people's numbers on how it happens. Better for us.
Did I answer your question, Brian?
I think so.
I'm talking myself into a lower, I'm talking myself into a lower number.
Yeah, I can do that.
Somebody can make a motion for either one, and then we could do it that way.
I move that we set the rate at 70 percent.
This is subject to the policy.
Yes, subject to the policy.
I'll second it.
All right, we've talked about it a lot, anybody wanna discuss that more?
No.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Were there, no ayes?
Aye, two ayes.
Was that 70 or 75?
70.
70, all right. Nays?
Nay.
All right, so that does not work. Does anybody have a different motion?
75 percent.
Second.
All right, we've talked about it much, anybody wanted to say something more? Like, all in favor of 75, subject to policy, say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
All right. So, let me ask you guys this, now that we, we had that vote, the, everything else in the report is unanimous? Are we saying that's unanimous, or are we noting that that was a 4-2 vote? I'll ask the two noes.
I'm fine with it, go ahead.
All right.
I don't think you can say it was unanimous.
Well, I would say, I, I, I would be prepared to say that I'm, I'm in favor.
Right, I mean, we're, I'm in support of passing a limit, is what you could say.
I mean, we've had others, like, we did actually vote.
Unanimous, unanimous. Yes, that part is unanimous.
All right, I'm just gonna have it read that there were, it was a 4-2 vote, the two were, that thought it should be 70 and 75, I'll just put a f- that covers that.
That's accurate.
And I really like the thought that everything else that we've got, we've really talked about in a comprehensive manner.
I have one quick question, because you said, you, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going out of order, but I'm in my mind, I need to...
It's in order somewhere.
You had mentioned at the very beginning of this, you expected this to be the last meeting of the body, and I was, my question is, we're gonna see a report, a draft of a report, are we gonna just send in comments about that, or do we need to meet again to do, to respond to the draft?
I want to, let's, let's figure out what other comments we got, because I could make that argument both ways. Do you have more?
No, I don't, and I have slipped out.
Yeah, you see your vote early, must be 10 o'clock.
I'm not, I'm not mad. I think this has been, I mean, I think this has been very helpful, and I'm happy to get back to you.
If we're all still here, I have really enjoyed being on this committee. I mean, I think everybody brought their own perspective to it, and listened to everybody else respectfully, and tried to learn as much as we could, and it's been a very positive experience.
Well, I'll say from the MDHA standpoint, that this has been enormously beneficial to us, both the good and the bad, and what we've heard. And if you don't see us begin to incorporate a lot of this, not just the recommendations, but just the, the general ideas that are out there, that'll be on us at this point.
I'm sorry, I gotta ask you about a couple things real quick. The, I sent around a list of things that I didn't think were in the report, like the streamline, the MDHA and Metro working together to improve and streamline design review process. You're good with that?
We're okay with that. We've got some of that planned.
And, like, I know we're all good with saying, "Improve the presentation, annual TIF reporting." And then, the last one was, currently only MDHA may recommend an amendment, it's subject to the council approval, and I'd like to have the plans read that either side can propose it, subject to the other guys.
But it's still both of them, still have to approve it, so, you've got to change a whole lot from that standpoint.
All right, you can go.
While recommendations are coming through, and you have a great idea about the report, if we can back up the reporting date, this due April 30th, and it may not help, because you're in the middle of budgeting, but our debt service is set up to go May 1, and so you're getting last year's data on April 30th.
Well, I would love to, if you want to push it back two months, so I can get...
The most current data. I would love to, the reporting is set for April 30th, and while we're coming up with recommendations, but that's set by ordinance, I would love to have an extra 30 days, because then I can get those payments are in, and you're, you're looking at the most current data I have. And I don't have, I don't have the loan balances actually at that point, the amortization schedules and everything.
So, basically, pushing the reporting back 30 days would get us one extra year of data?
Yes.
All right, consider that done.
That's smart.
Well, it was always, because I'm like, this is all last year's data, then...
All right, it sounded a thought about working together on the design review district. It just, when I read that, it just triggered a thought. The state statute of acquired designer, and we've always had design review in the plans, but I know that particularly in the Donaldson issue, that that was something that was controversial. And you don't always have to have, I mean, I think a lot of times, a developer's about to invest a lot of money in a project, particularly in a blighted district, may say, "I want some protection, that you're not gonna permit a lot of rocky stuff to go in here." And so, I think there's a good reason to have an architectural review component, but I just want to make that note that this...
Well, that would streamline the heck out of it. I mean, I think we've, we've talked about this one enough, the, and with the Donaldson TOD one, it was discussion, I mean, there's, obviously, the final resting place has not been achieved on this yet, and I don't think we're gonna figure it out today.
I agree with you.
All right, so I had us go to Charles Roberts' comments. I'm, how about Brian next?
So, we talked about 11, change, we're gonna make to 11, we talked about 7. 13, just in the interest of consistent use of terminology, is, is it correct to say "TIF district" at the end, or should that be redevelopment district?
Yeah, okay.
Where?
The last couple words are number 13.
Oh, no wonder, okay, I'll read it.
That's a good point.
Or, I guess for that matter, well, no, I mean, I guess you don't want to say TOD there. Or do you want to say TOD there? I guess is the...
All right, so it's gotta be redevelopment district or TOD.
Or you could just put "district" with a small d.
An all-encompassing usage of...
Yeah, all right, that's the winner.
God, I want to get a loss.
All right, what else you got? I think, I think that was it.
Number three, does that include the reporting that we've been talking about? It does say, related to TIF activities, and do we, have we articulated specifically the reporting anywhere? I'm just a little confused.
The, one of the ones that I wanted to add, improve the presentation, the annual TIF reporting, I think is gonna get us put in that section.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's hard to read right now, and I think, I really do, Joe, when you guys work on improving the reporting, so finances, materials that they got online about the budget, might be an interesting starting place. There's like a page, and then there's a little bit of a list, but some of the links will then take you to another page, that gets you multi-years worth of stuff. And it's, it's relatively intuitive, pretty, it's pretty intuitive, and that might be a starting place for improving the reporting, but I think, so we're gonna add one that says that.
You know, when I was talking about utilizing the model for MH, the Human Relations Commission I was talking about for this report, but that's okay, because it can't be done, but that's all right. At least we're gonna use that model, because it's a good one.
Yeah.
And it's related to the TIF 101. Okay, number six, about a raw resource and fully staffed...
We negotiated that one.
Yeah, we talked about that. What I'm trying to get at is six, and then we go down to 14, where we encourage IDB to review the work when they had no staff. How do we align those, or at least?
Well, actually, the Office of Economic and Community Development staffs the IDB.
Oh.
Yeah, IDB, the full statement is, IDB has no staff of their own.
Full time, yeah.
But there's a MOU between the IDB and the mayor's office.
It's Office of Economic and Community Development.
Is it utilized? I mean, does...
Yeah, that's, that's who's the staff.
That's how they run the committee.
Okay, all right. Well, who do they do besides run the meetings?
When, when they, they provide analysis for projects that are being considered by the IDB.
And did the Beltwood project, I guess.
Yeah.
So, they're, they're technically, they have access to a staff, a professional staff?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my...
And finance is a resource, also on that committee.
Okay, and...
We've sent somebody, maybe one of us.
Including myself.
Okay, number nine, suppose people don't know what the Do Better Bill is, do we need any kind of explanatory anything, or just leave it like that?
Just kind of which is? Just come for which is?
Um, how about I add a bill number, so, yeah.
Okay, we talked about the methodology or policy that MDHA is gonna develop, is there any kind, do we need to put any kind of a timeline, or anything like that?
Which one are you looking at?
Well, it was thirteen, but I thought we also talked about a methodology and a process related to something else, but maybe I'm just getting it set.
Um, I mean, I'll tell you, this is another one where I got my thought that isn't on paper, um, my thought is, the, somebody's gonna wanna propose a transit-oriented development district, and it better be figured out by then.
Okay, so we don't need a date?
Hey, but I, Paulette, to your thought, I really do think that it would be great, maybe even in the introduction, or somewhere that gives a sense that we don't want all these recommendations to just go on a shelf and nothing to happen, that there is an anticipation that-
I can tell you, when we get to fifteen, my point on fifteen was gonna be, I don't think fifteen is adequate, um, and I think, I think, I think Liz would say, I wrote down as far as we got in that last meeting, but that whole, you know, accountabilities and roles, and-
It needs a little work.
It needs some work.
Well, I would just like to say, because I'm just gonna skip down to fifteen, since you're talking about it now, is, given our, my experience with transit and affordability, I would just like to see something in there that says that this body, within six months, or nine months, or twelve months, or whatever timeframe we say, will review the implementation and make rec- you know, something that it just doesn't die, and then, another thing I wanted to know is, how is this going to be presented, do we make a presentation to the mayor's office, do we make a presentation to council, do we make a presentation to MDHA?
What did your legislation say?
I don't think it said it.
I'm just saying, who, did it say who we're to report back to?
Um, I think it's back to the council, but I don't have that in front of me.
But, all I'm saying is, I would like to see more than sending the report, I would like this group to actual do a presentation, because I think things die if you don't, and it might die anyway, but at least we put forth an effort to make sure it doesn't die, and your legislation is gonna help that as well.
Yeah, let's, let's save that to the end, because I, I definitely want to talk about fifteen, and the idea of follow-up and delivering our all things that we gotta, we gotta get through.
Okay, I know we spent a lot of time on twelve, and, um, I guess I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if there was some flexibility, so they could review it before ten years, and so up to ten years, because you're, you know, we don't know, they're gonna be dynamic situations, and, I don't know, maybe there's a downside to that, but it just seems like a really, really long time, and I know the TIFs are thirty, but, you know, that's just my reaction.
How about, um-
Up to, I like.
I guess, I'm fast forwarding to trying to draft legislation, like, how do I-
Is it at a minimum?
What would trigger it?
At a minimum of every ten years?
I think, I think it would be, how about, well, let me ask you guys a question, do we want, to do it in under ten years, do we want it to be some group has got the ability to automatically trigger a review in under ten years, or does there have to be agreement among some folks to trigger a review in under ten years?
I would rather see automatic review in under ten years.
So, we'd have to set a minimum, because I've got some council colleagues that would set up a review three weeks after it started.
So, just, just for my own ignorance, what power does the council have now?
Well, do we require an amendment? Zero, that, right now, we don't, we don't even get to propose an amendment, right now, any amendment to a redevelopment plan must be initiated by MDHA, so, it's, the, right now, the council literally has no ability to even initiate it.
Would you want to set up timeframes, like, any time between seven years, no more than ten?
Yeah, I think it's gotta be a minimum.
Yeah, I, I would be fine with seven to ten.
Yeah, excellent, so, that was number, I mean, we're looking at twelve.
It was twelve.
So, it could be unilaterally triggered by MDHA or the council, anytime after seven, but no later than ten?
Yes, yes.
Now, from my purpos, is this for existing districts that all of a sudden we gotta jump into, is this for new districts, or, or, I mean, because what happens is, there's only three years left on the district, because we have a couple of these, you know, I, that's how I just want a little bit, because like East Bank's getting ready to expire, I can't do loans in East Bank, because it's gonna expire, so there's really no sense in reviewing.
Oh, I can, I mean, I'm assuming I'm gonna be the sponsor of the legislation, and we could work through that.
All right, I just put that, I wanted to point that out, on some of those.
That's a good catch.
So, it seems to me that we're saying existing and future, if we're worried about something that's expiring, okay, just want to be clear.
All right, I just need a note for myself here.
I think I'm finished.
Bert, you got any?
I do not.
Um, Talia, you got any on this page?
I really think fifteen would stay, is the one, that's all I had last.
Yeah, I want to hear what you have to say about accountability and follow-up, but I don't have anything that-
One thing, I'm sorry, you, I don't see transparency in here anyway, must be in the introduction.
It's inferred in communication, but you want to see the word?
That's, that's, we've used it a lot.
Well, in the, in the open areas, this committee's desire for transparency and how the city approaches TIF.
Yes, sure is.
First paragraph of the document.
You want to bold that?
Or, you got Communication, Transparency, and Education?
Just, where are, where on the first page? The summary?
It's up here.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, recommendations.
Yeah, I think adding Communication, Transparency, and Education's fine, because a number of those are transparency, or improvement, yeah, improvement.
Richard, tell me again what you were just looking at.
Communicate, the first group of recommendations is now Communication and Education, called Communication, Transparency, and Education.
Just the title.
Right here, the heading.
Okay, transparency?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, finally with the program here. All right, uh, so, did you say, I'm sorry?
No, good, just fifteen.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's all I had, was fifteen.
Richard, I'm sorry.
Was fifteen.
All right, so-
Fifteen?
Fifteen. Good lord, um, so, so I was really, I mean, I mean, she wrote down what we got, as far as we got, so, kudos to her, but it feels like it is incomplete in several ways, like, just that fifteen A refers to number four above-
Right.
But, you know, we need somebody to do one, two, three, and five, for example, also, and so, if we're gonna say who's doing stuff, we should say who's doing all the stuff, I know that's hard if we're gonna do it, and then there is the questions Paulette raised about, how does the presentation of this go, is, you know, email, press conference, somewhere in between, and then the, the follow-up questions, and, so, that's three topics, the, what are we putting in this thing for establishing roles, how are we rolling this out, what are we doing, how does, how does it get measured in the future? Now, so, uh, let's, let's talk about the, the, let's try to knock off an easy one first, the rollout, what have you guys had in mind about that, you know, if there was a, well, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to do it.
Well, if it's a report to the council, I think there needs to be a formal-
Go to the council.
Right, go to the council, and a presentation made, a minimum to the council, I mean, if that's what the legislation requires, I think it's more than just sending a copy of the report. Um, I think you, you invite the, many of those same stakeholders that received the invitation from, from Tubercary, so that they can be there when the rollout happens, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Send it to the same group of-
Um, it's gonna be hard with the budget season.
I know, I'm just saying-
But that's what it's gonna take, I guess.
If you don't invite them.
But, this in two hours, this, like, thirty minutes?
I bet it's an hour.
Yeah, I mean, that all depends on-
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be an hour, I think. Um, all right, so, good, that was an easy one, um, the grading in, in the future, Paulette suggests that we have a get-together in a year.
Somebody needs a monitor?
At completion of a year, direct someone to do it, or an internal auditor, future internal auditor, I don't know, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, I'm thinking out loud.
Well, who would be the right person to check on it in a year?
I think the council, MDHA, and finance collectively report back to the council in one year, does that make sense?
So, we would add that as a recommendation, and then it would be up to me to stick that into legislation?
Right, that we just report back in a year, on the status of the implementation, does that make sense?
My only addition to that would be, you ought to do it either earlier, so you're not in the middle of budget season, or after, so that you're, just so that you're doing it in a-
By December of twenty?
December of twenty?
No, I mean, if you think about it, I mean, it's only eighteen months away, so it gives you time to get-
Yeah, what do you think, Paulette?
Stuff done, and, and to get a report, and you've got time to compile.
Yeah, they're making the point.
Yeah, I, I, I like avoiding the budget season, so, at the very least, it would be after June thirty, so, uh, September is good, and that's only, so-
I think it's three months to kind of get it together.
I don't have, I don't have a preference, I, December is what, what, eighteen months?
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Just some, I mean, not later than December, maybe say it like that, so if you can get that quicker.
Yeah, and it needs to be early December, because things start getting hectic and crazy.
Yeah, well, believe me, nobody's-
But not later than December.
Nobody's gonna do it in the second half of December.
Oh, we did the transit stuff in the second half.
All right. Tell you what, no.
Not later than-
Why are we saying no later than?
December fifteen.
Yeah.
December fifteen, twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Now, who's, who's it, finance, MDHA, and who else?
I think it's finance, and, finance and MDHA.
I thought you said somebody else.
She said the council, but-
Oh, okay.
To report back to the council.
Yeah, okay, I'm with you.
It just, and do we need to have the mayor's office in there as well, since we are putting things in the economic community development?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, MDHA, finance, mayor's office, report back to council, no later than twelve fifteen twenty twenty. All right, the hard one, the, the actual substance of this number fifteen, um, well, there's two basic choices, go down this list of recommendations and, like, identify everyone who's doing it, or be softer than that.
I think this check-in that you're gonna do takes care of all of the details, that you'll get a report back on everything that's in that report. Oh, she's not happy.
How about the, how about this idea, making stuff up, how about we ask the same three groups, MDHA, finance, and mayor's office, to let us, let the council know by the end of September this year, who's assigned the primary task for each of the recommendations?
That'd be fine if you also recommend we have possession.
Okay.
I will.
What do you, what do you think about that, Joe?
I, um, yeah, I think, once they get through June, I think, I mean, I think, in the, in the September, because this will be a reward, essentially.
He's your first quarter to figure it out.
Yeah, what do you think?
I think it's good to assign responsibility, because otherwise, it doesn't get done, but I'd also like some flexibility, because who we think might be most appropriate now may well change, and if, as Talia says, she needs a person, you know, we don't, there's nobody kind of, what do you call it, this is added work for somebody to kind of monitor, because you're not gonna do it, those of us around the table, we're basically finished when the report is done, I mean, we'll review and read, but, you know.
Brian, what do you think?
We'll figure it out.
So, that means you're okay with the idea of-
I'm okay with it.
People having to give the council who the assignments are by the end of September?
I'm okay with it.
We're gonna have to, because you're gonna amend the plans, that's gonna have a cap on it, and we're gonna be doing business, so, I mean, we're gonna have to start implementing this, essentially, along passages of legislation, so it will be moving.
The other thing I would tell you is that seven of these, I think, I'm, I'm looking at the existing, not the rework, but seven or eight of these have already been assigned, of the fourteen have already been assigned, so there are not many of them that are out there that don't have, um, some of them, like, work with key stakeholders or some community groups to hold, I mean, some of these, the MDHA pieces, pretty self-absorbed, so, I think you're almost there, so September, you should plenty of time to get there, I think.
Um, so, that means that back on fifteen, A is gonna go away.
Uh, I think Charles Roberts said that that was gonna be changed to-
Oh, okay.
Because MDHA is how long.
Because they're, they're already started, so we'll leave that, and then, B is gonna stay, um, we're gonna add one that we've talked about just now, about requiring the follow-up by twenty, December twenty twenty, add one about MDHA, finance, and mayor's office, the reporting on the assignments for each recommendation, no later than September thirty this year, and then, C, I mean, we, we definitely are creating more work, do we wanna, I mean, do we anticipate it's two full-time positions? Where'd that come from?
I think- I think I just said it.
Right, and then Liz wrote it down, and there it is.
I think it is important that we know that we're asking, we are asking for a work to be done that requires the resources to be able to get it done, and that to not provide those resources makes it, I mean, it feels like an unfunded federal mandate.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about, so, in fifteen, on, on C, I think, I asked a question, are, is it really two positions, or are we leaving out the parenthetical and leaving it to, we need resources, I don't know.
Were you just thinking about what finance needs maybe, or other organizations, you know, I don't, I don't know what kind of impact this might have on ECD, for example, I can't say today what that impact may be, because this is something that they've not done before, so, is that, right?
And for MDHA, we've added eight or ten tasks, and whether those-
Adding staffing for those three organizations.
I, I, I'm, I'm less, well, I guess I'm less clear on, on the additional work that would go onto ECD, I mean, there's the single-point contact recommendation-
I'm just saying, I don't know what that looks like.
Yeah, I think finance and MDHA, I mean, I think the bulk of this is gonna be finance and MDHA, so, that's where the resources would need to be. and MDHA, so that's where the resources would need to be committed.
How do you guys feel about changing the second sen, this is a two-part suggestion, changing the second sentence to say, we anticipate this may require adding additional personnel, without saying a number on it?
To, to finance and MDHA.
And then, and then the second part of the suggestion was to, as part of that September 30, 2019, report to, propose, if, you know, what the additional staffing, if any, might need to be.
I thought about that when I was going to the, when I walked down the hall a moment ago. And I was thinking about the timing, perhaps if there was a runoff, and how much time that might give someone to prepare a recommendation back.
Maybe September 30 should be October 31.
Okay. And the council, you know, they're, they're quite a bit dark in September anyway, so there's nothing in the body to report back, so...
Yeah, you can be assured.
Does that make sense?
If it goes, yeah.
Yeah.
At least in some race.
Right. So October might be better.
I would, I would...
You agree with that?
I agree with your statement.
You don't want all that going on in September. You don't want it.
You appreciate it. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you so much.
We got, we got one more, I guess, the, whether we gotta meet again, or whether we're gonna be able to read it, and...
I'll commit to, send someone back in and track changes mode if you were good with that.
Oh, I hate that.
Oh, I love that.
So, so I think SharePoint has the capability of collaborative editing.
Oh, okay.
We could do that. I mean, that's pretty transparent. Or we could send markups to some central place, whatever the group prefers.
I think with the markups, it may be obvious whether we need to get together.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we should attempt to do this with markups.
Okay.
And I can tell y'all that if, if, if more than two people want, feel like we need a face-to-face, then we'll have a face-to-face, and we'll get, we'll do that. And hopefully, we, either way's fine. We'll get the best possible result either way, so...
Why don't we, why don't we commit to having at least one convening before a council presentation is made?
Exactly.
Before it's rolled out, even if it's a very short meeting. Let's at least commit to that.
I mean, I think, I mean, if necessary, so we're not locked in needing to meet just to get together. I mean, if we do this electronically, let's do that, right?
I don't think we could've done what we did just now electronically, because we had that, we had that opportunity and we didn't. And then, as people responded, it triggered things that you may not have thought about while you were in the process.
But I think it may be easier if this next go around.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and I'm afraid of, like, if we, if we pick a fallback meeting date, then we're not gonna read it like we mean it.
Well, let's read it, let's read it. You know what? I'm ready.
I read mine as we were waiting for everybody to gather, but it wasn't, you know, this... When's this presentation at the council likely?
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be difficult to schedule around the budget stuff, but...
A quick check-in.
But I need, Joe and I have talked a little bit about timing. I think the, I think I, we need a public hearing that can't happen until July. So I actually, we don't have to submit legislation until end of June, so we have a public meeting in July. But I probably, I would love to get legislation filed in the first meeting in June, so, and then it would just defer second reading until the first meeting in July, because that's when we would have a public hearing. And that would give us, if legislation was aimed for the first reading in the beginning of June, that would give us the whole month of May to have the meeting with the council. But theoretically, not theoretically, we are supposed to have a report in six months, which is roughly the first week of May. So theoretically, the report's supposed to be done in the next 14 days. So we should attempt to do that.
Exactly.
That would give us, you know, three more weeks in, in May, some time to squeeze in the meeting. The council chamber, legislation happens, first reading in June, and off we go.
The council usually have extra meetings in June because of the budget.
Oh, lots of them.
Yeah. But there's no attention span for anything other than budget.
Budget, yeah. Bandwidth is...
Bandwidth is a better word. So I'm, I feel like the, by the end of this week, you guys will see the draft, and you're only gonna have four or five days to comment, whatever you're gonna comment.
I'll comment if it's after May, if you're okay with after May first.
Yes.
Is that when the budget turns, please? No, that's when we file.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I really, I appreciate everybody's attention to this whole thing. This has been, I mean, I know we got more work to do still, but it feels, feels like it's been a good, good effort. I really appreciate it.
It's good to me.
I just want one thing added or changed, right? I don't know who still did this, but I'm a planner.
Like we are?
I'm a planner.
Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.